Today's social media segment is brought to you by Terrebonne General Health System. Your health is our legacy. Rouses, you're either local or you're not. Buick, the craft of modern luxury. St. Martin and Bork, know your rights.
I think they're ready to get started. We're gonna open up with an opening prayer. Father God, we come to say thank you. Thank you, God, for your grace and your mercy. We thank you, God, for last night's rest. We thank you for allowing us to get up to see a brand-new day. Now, God, we ask you to bless this meeting. Bless the president and his cabinet. Continue to strengthen the city of Terrebonne and let us to go forward in your name. Help us to move forward the way you want us to go and not ourselves. Continue to bless the men and women that support us, the men and women that fight and secure our borders. Bless the officers, men and women, all over the world. It is in Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen. We can let the church say amen now. Amen. I have the pleasure of coming to introduce our councilman for tonight, Councilman Carl Harding. One that I've been knowing all my life and has known me. We've worked on different projects. I can tell you this about Carl. Carl is a people person. Carl loves to help people. And I'm thankful because I've learned a lot just being in his presence. Normally, when he calls me, we're on the phone. One thing I can tell you also, he's a God-fearing man. And how many of you know you need God in your life in order to accomplish anything? So I'm thankful for him not only to be the district's number-two representative for the council, but I am grateful that he is a people person. So ladies and gentlemen, as God would have him to come, I give you our councilman, Carl Harding. Let's give him my hand. Clap of praise.
Yeah, he left one part out too. Good cousin. Good evening, good evening, good evening. We have one of these pre-dusting things that we should be dealing with. And sometimes we look in the parking lot, but then everybody that's here is the ones that's supposed to be here. And I wanna greet you and give you a little presentation before we go about what we have to do here. And first of all, we want to look at the person to your right and say, "We ain't here together." So look the other way and say, "We ain't here together." And it's rather obvious that we ain't here together. We trying to get this little thing in here. So you wanna know who I am? I'm a child of God and I'm not afraid to say so. I'm a citizen of the United States of America. I'm an elected official. I'm a servant of the people that voted for me and the people that did not vote for me. And you have to look at the people that didn't vote for me and did vote for me, but then there are people that are out there that cannot vote, don't have the opportunity to vote. There are religious groups that don't actually participate in voting. Therefore, I represent not only the people that's within my community that can vote for me. I represent all the people in the community also. One thing about voting. Had this lady, she come up to me, she said, "Mr. Carl," she was referred to me by another lady. She said, "Well, I wanna do some business with the city." I said, "Okay." She said, "We can look into that." She said, "Well, I need a letter of recommendation." Yeah, like a letter of recommendation. So I did my research on her and set up a meeting at my office. But on my way to the office, I stopped at the office of voter registers. Got the information on the lady. She come up to the office, she give me the whole nine yards. The whole nine yards. I said, "Well, I understand that, but you wanna do business with the parish? I just checked the voter registers office and you haven't voted in 12 years. In fact, you didn't vote for me." So a lot of people come and they wanna do business. And voting, and in my position, voting is important to me because there's a lot of people that didn't have the opportunity to vote. I won by 12 votes. The first time, the second time, I was so blessed. I was so blessed that I was unopposed for one particular reason. It took all the politics out of me campaigning. I didn't have to go out there and campaign for someone to give me anything. I stand here, I'm my own man now. I don't have no obligations to nobody. Gentleman you met back there, Mr. Steve Pineville. I remember I was rather reluctant when I was campaigning the first time. He said, "Go up there, Mr. Harding, go up there, Mr. Harding, go up there, Mr. Harding." And I found out that as we go on, to be honest with you, some politicians, they'll tell you something that you wouldn't wanna repeat. So let's get to the program so we can get these fine people here along our way. What we're gonna deal with today. See, we have a leak. Government has a leak in it because, you know, they say, "Who names their children?" They say, or I heard, they told me. Bad information is worse than no information at all. We're gonna have a presentation as we go on by Mr. Robbie Lee. He's gonna go over what we doing, how we doing it in government. He's working on something where so many folk have made complaints. I've been trying to do this, we've done that with the state when I was working there. And the sheriff has a system that he's working with. Where you make a complaint, that complaint is registered, it's documented. And as a politician, representing the people, if we paying somebody our tax-paying dollars and you register a complaint, we pay a reasonable salary with the government. And that's the expectation that the citizens have. That they make a complaint, they follow up on the complaint with the government and saying this went so long without having any response. I see my cousin Ruth over there, she shaking her head. Okay. So we holding them accountable. But there have been times when people make false claims. Now, look at this part in this way. We have people that wanna get ahead of the line. That don't happen. If you look at my face, I've been behind the line. So in order for anybody to hold anybody accountable, the rule is the rule. Everybody, nobody about the rule. Therefore, there's no exception. You think Carl Harding would go up there? I hate to ask somebody for a favor. So if somebody holds me accountable, I'm gonna hold them accountable, but we also hold the citizens accountable. So we gonna get the information out there to you. This portion right here, if you're looking at this, oftentimes whichever side of the fence you own, that's your view. How many times you said, "Bro, no, don't go that way? No, don't go that way?" It's a viewpoint. We gonna cover that basically in Mr. Jim Wendell. He's gonna get the quality of life. We had some changes. People were more concerned about what we losing, what we not losing by country sports park, recreation, other qualities of life that are available through consolidated government. We also, we wanna take care of this right here to give you an example. Got it off the internet. It's not a Republican and a Democrat thing, but oftentimes I'm found in the middle of some of the politics. And I'm glad I'm Christian, I stand on my own two feet. My yay is my yay. And I've been known with the Bible saying, "Blessed are the peacemaker." There have been times that I had to choose a side or just be the peacemaker. In a lot of cases, the enemy of my enemy was my friend. But sometime in politics, if you standing in the middle for the right, you gonna get punched in the mouth. This up here, the next one. I was at a gym and had a department head that was associated with recreation. And we were standing up because really, to be honest with you, I was just checking him out. Heard a few little things about him, just that and the other, so I looked at him, I said, "Man, you know him, Preacher?" "Yeah." He turned red in the face. I did that. So the point I was trying to get him to understand, see those arms up there? I was watching gymnastics today. The Americans, they got third place. And I look at that third-place gymnastic teams and it seem as if that it had a very diverse culture. They had a very diverse culture. This is the objective that I am trying to achieve in Terrebonne Parish. A lot of times that's infighting. Gotta be peacemaker. People don't see eye to eye. They have the wrong information. If you wanna tell it like it is, we gonna tell it like it is. I'm gonna come back, but I wanna recognize some elected officials and past elected officials. Senator Mike Feizi. He's gonna be speaking a little later on if he choose to. State Representative Jessica Doming. We have our police chief here. Was a representative from the sheriff's office back there in the back. Mr. Brian Pleasure. Mr. Alvin Tillman. Mr., they call him Cookie. Mr. Lloyd Gibson back there in the back. Let me stop and we wanna have Steve Chris, Chris Pulaski family in mind. He had death in his family, so he was not able to attend this particular meeting. And my brother Greg, he's an elected official. I forgot, Mr. Jerome Bargum. The president of NWA CP and Mr. Jason Bergeron, parish president. Okay, gotcha. We gonna come to him though later on down the line.
Today's social media segment is brought to you by South Louisiana Bank. It's better when we bank together. Waits and Downer, attorneys at law. Terrebonne Ford, built for tough.
So I would like to have the presentation by Mr. Jim Wendell.
Good afternoon, everyone. As Councilman Harding said, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out. We all have relationships in our life. You have relationships with your spouse. You have business relationships, you have personal relationships. But it's very important for a government to have a public-private relationship. And this is the first step to having that done. Communication, transparency, listening to what the people you represent have to say, taking action on it, making it a better government and a better environment for all. As Councilman Harding said, my name is Jim Wendell. I am the director of the Department of Quality of Life. That is a new thing under the administration of President Bergeron. And to this day, I'm still asked, "What is quality of life and what does it entail?" So I'm gonna give you a five-minute quick orientation to let you know where we were, where we're going, what you can expect from us and what we need from you in order to make that relationship work and turn things around that have been dysfunctional for quite some time within the parish. Department of Quality of Life, if you see it across the top, it does have three different divisions that are located in it. Athletics and Leisure, which used to be the old TPR, Terrebonne Parish Recreation. It has Cultural Enrichment, which used to be Downtown Homa. All the things that happened there, the street fairs and festivals and gatherings that are down there around the courthouse and things of that nature. And at the bottoms is Venues and Destinations. And that used to be the Civic Center and the Sportsplex. When dealing with the relationships, we not only realize that in these three areas of government with Terrebonne Parish, we didn't have a good public-private relationship, but we also didn't have a good relationship within the government with ourselves. So our public-public relationship left a lot to be desired. A lot of these different divisions that are now falling under Quality of Life did basically the same thing for the same people, but we didn't cooperate with each other. We didn't communicate with each other. We didn't work with each other. So there was some forethought put into it and said, "We can do better, we need to do better." So we did a little bit reorganization, and I'll explain that to you really quick. Okay, under the Department of Quality of Life, I am the director of that department. And under that falls Athletics and Leisure. That is the old TPR, all of the ball games and things like that. And if you see what's under there, now we offer youth sports programs, adult sports programs, adaptive programs, specialty programs that we have that are funded through taxes. We also have the tennis complex, Special Olympics. We provide some funding for the recreational summer fun camps that are held over the summer at the recreation districts and the airbase splash pads. So that is Athletics and Leisure. And the whole thought behind this is that if you're looking for a place to relax, have fun in Terrebonne Parish, this is the department that can bring that to you. As I said before, we've been very dysfunctional for a long time. There was a lot of misinformation. There's still a lot of misinformation out there, so we figured we needed to clean it up a little bit in order to do a better job for you guys. We have made lots of changes in the youth and adult recreation programs that we have. Anybody ever had their kids in TPR? Grandkids, been in TPR? We lacked communication. We lacked getting along with parents, getting along with coaches, accepting feedback, doing things for the betterment of the community instead of ourselves and what's the easy way out. So we took a long, hard look in the mirror and identified the changes that were made. Everybody has embraced this. Everybody has given 100% in order to change it around. We have added sports. We have made it easier to sign up to coach, to sign up kids. You can do that online. We have also made it a lot easier. We've, I guess, repaired some relationships that we had with recreation districts. So now we have better communication, better cooperation. For those of you that don't know, TPR or now Athletics and Leisure just handles these programs. And the name before, part of the reason for the name change was when people said Terrebonne Parish Recreation, they encompassed everything within recreation. Every gym, every ball field, every, you know, community park and everything else. And those fall under the direction and the management of 11 different recreation districts in the parish. So a lot of times people would call and say "The grass at this park is high" or "The bleacher at this park is, you know, loose." We would pass that information on to the recreation districts, but we wanted to identify as to what we were. We are athletic programs and we are trying our darndest to change around what's been dysfunctional with them and make them work. We would register kids and we would throw them out there on the field prior and give them a couple of weeks to practice and then expect, you know, good results from it. And we quickly realized that we're doing the same things over and over in the same cycle and expecting a positive different result and it's not happening. So now we register early enough, we give them enough time where they have at least four or five weeks to be able to practice before they start the season. That way, we're setting these kids up for success. There's no question as to where they're supposed to be, what they're supposed to be doing. They have time to spend with these coaches, with these mentors, with these role models. The coaches and role models that we're talking about, we rely 100% on volunteer coaches to come out. Looking around, I see a few people who have donated some time and knowledge and effort to be the role models for these kids, but we've also made it easier to coach. Coaches are now eligible for a $500 tax credit that we'll write a letter for donating at least 30 hours a year to a public recreation program. So there's very small things that have been available for years that they were identified, but we as TPR, as the parish, never took action on. Now, if you sign up to be a coach and you're volunteering your time, not only for your kid, but the kids in your community, the kids in your neighborhood, we are now, we waive the fee for the coach's child. So before, we were actually charging you to help us coach the kids at Terrebonne Parish. So there's not one major problem that existed within TPR that we could just wave a magic wand and take care of it. But there are 200 little bitty things that as we work on them and get them cleaned up, it's gonna make a better overall program. And those of you who have kept your eye on us this year or see what's going on, we haven't been perfect even though we restructured a few things. But you can't fix everything immediately. We've taken strides to do it. We're where we need to be, we're improving as we go. And as we get through a season and with the changes that we've implemented and see what's working great and what still needs a little bit of fine tuning to make it, you know, operate correctly, we will continue to make these things better. So I thank you for your patience, for your understanding. And please, if you have the ability and you have the skill, come on out, give us a hand, make a positive impact in the life of some of these children. We can't do it without you and we promise to get better. One of the big things transparency and communication-wise, you can pick up the phone and I'll have my contact information later on, or you can call the office. We are listening to what you have to say about input into the programs, about changes you want, about offerings you want, different sports, different things, and we're taking that into consideration. You can ask Greg, "We sit in the office all the time. This is a list of what people are saying. What can we do to improve this and improve that?" And although we are taking all of this constructive criticism and some of these things into play, I'll just tell you really quick. I'll go back to the baseball-softball season that we just had. We had 127 teams with about 3,500 participants that participated in our baseball-softball program. Because of some storm damage, because of some repairs that are still going on, that insurance and FEMA are finally settling up so that the recreation districts can get some of these things filled. Those 127 teams, we had to separate them amongst 17 ball fields that we could use. So no matter how you do the math, 127 doesn't divide by 17 very well. So we had to split it up, boys, girls, split it up by age. We put some early, some in the middle. We had some delayed that were late just so that we can get these kids back out here and doing things, you know, to keep them out of trouble, to keep them off the video games, to keep them active, to keep them interested until they get into some school sports and things like that. So when you call and you say, "I would like to see this changed or I'd like to see that changed," we need that feedback, we need that input because these are public programs, programs that we provide for you guys, for the public. And it should be what is, you know, what meets your needs. But with 3,500 participants, that's 3,500 parents that are saying, "We wanna practice on Monday and Wednesday," or "We wanna practice on Tuesday or Thursday." So if you call and say, "We wanna practice on Monday and Wednesday," and it ends up that the practices are on Tuesday and Thursday, it's not because we didn't listen to your feedback, but that's where the communication comes in. You can call back and say, "I thought we discussed that, but now we have a logical explanation to give you feedback on why we chose to do something 'cause it's for the complete betterment of the program." So hope you guys can see that. Hope we are doing better than we have in the past to improve on that. And please, don't give up on us 'cause we're here, we're ready to serve and repair these relationships. Our second is Cultural Enrichment. We took a look at what Ms. Ann Piku did downtown and it extended past that. We're a very culturally diverse group. We do very, very few things that are black and white. There's different groups that come that wanna use Downtown Homa, that wanna use public spaces, that wanna use areas. And we figured we needed to do a better job with that as well. So Cultural Enrichment now includes, of course, what it always has, the downtown Main Street, the Courthouse Square, all of the fairs, festivals, get-togethers that happen around those areas. I know they have gospel singing, they have Alive After Five, a bunch of different things that you can come downtown and have fun with. The Downtown Marina, the Bayou Terrebonne Waterlife Museum, the Terrebonne Folk and Culture Center. That now includes parades, festivals, and family fun. That's Mardi Gras, the Irish-Italian parade, the Christmas parade, which is coming up in six months. and Volunteer Terrebonne, which goes back to that tax credit thing where we have a lot of church groups. We have a lot of civic groups that call all the time and say, we need service hours. We need to be able to give back. What can we do? So that cultural enrichment is handling that, where we can assign church groups to work with people from our planning and zoning department with nuisance and abatement to help them clean up properties, adopt a section of roadway, adopt a park to for a group to go in there once a week or once a month, pick up trash, just clean up, some general things that bring us together as a community, that gives people pride in the area that they live in and the parish that they live in. So cultural enrichment is now going to include a lot of that stuff, so it's a one-stop shop that you can still call and get those things done. Now, venues and destinations changed a little bit. Venues and destinations, as I told you, was the Homa Terrebonne Civic Center, the Barry Ballverland Civic Center, and the Bayou Country Sports Park. We moved the municipal auditorium and Dumas Auditorium from cultural enrichment or what used to be downtown Homa into venues and destinations, because those two places are venues and destinations as well. You used to have to call four or five different places to find out if there was a place that you can hold an event or something that you can do. So it just made sense to us to include all these things in a one-stop shop. So if you call the civic center and say, hey, I want to have a wedding. I have this many people. This is my budget. I want to have it on this day. They don't say, well, it's booked for that day. Thank you. Call again. They can say, well, the civic center is booked, but we do have the municipal auditorium that can hold that amount of people. It falls within your budget. So it just makes sense to incorporate those together to give the public a better experience when they call us looking for solutions to an event or something that there happened. So those are all the small things that we're doing to try to make Terrebonne better, to move Terrebonne forward, to come together and provide a better quality of life for the residents of Terrebonne. The next big question that we get, budgets and personnel. Everybody want to know, wants to know who's doing this work and how much is it costing me? What are you going to raise my taxes in order to provide that service for me? We have not raised taxes. There is no plan to do any of that. We are using the same budgets with the same personnel. We've shifted personnel laterally across. We were able to eliminate some positions by making one director over three three different divisions, which kind of saves budgetary-wise and and uses our money a little bit wiser. But no one, when this was formed, did they come in and lose their job. So we're using the same amount of money with what we have. Our personnel and contacts, as I said, we are the same people doing the same thing. We'll be able to, you know, help you when you give us a call. All the phone numbers remain the same. All the same people are there. We've changed a few job descriptions and a few tasks, but we are definitely there. Only change that we did make in order to better serve the public, the Athletics and Leisure Division has moved downtown to seven eight six eight Main Street, the old City Hall building on the corner of Good and Main Street. So you can pull right up, jump out, ring the doorbell, get buzzed in, and we can take care of you right there. So we we did move there. And other than that, I thank you guys and thanks so many for coming out and for listening to what we have to say.
I often serve as the bridge between the haves and the have-nots. Some of these people in this audience, they're suffering from a bad case of lack of. They feel this, that they have a lack of information. They got a lack of work quality. I can see it in their faces and they have, and later you're going to have an opportunity to express yourself. That's why we we bring it to you. I want to hear what you have to say. I've heard what you have to say. I relate this message to government and other people when we're going to find out where our problems are and how we made the improvements. And I'm almost like in a position now that when a preacher forgets about announcing his wife. But I'm going to introduce to you, you guys, the most powerful, in my opinion, the most powerful woman in Terrebonne Parish. Ladies and gentlemen, my mother, Ms. Ruby Hamilton. And I'm a, I'm a, I'm a take a page out of Reverend Cleveland Williams. All my family raised, wait, I mean, real quick, yeah, my family raised, okay. So that's in case anybody want to talk about me, let y'all know where everybody at. So we're going to come with Robbie Lee, and by the way, Jim has been a great guy. Robbie Lee is another fiery guy. He's here. I I I tell you what, you know, he he's he's straight out of high tech. So we're going to come and let him do his thing.
I'm not going to take a lot of y'all's time. A lot of questions we get from people is who to call in the event you have any kind of emergency. So I have a few phone numbers up here. I will rotate this a little bit easy for everyone to see. So if you have any kind of request, we have the Department of Coastal Reservation, Communications, Customer Service, Department of Housing and Human Services with Ms. Kelly here, Housing Resources and Risk Management, Department of Public Works, Good Earth Transit, Forge Drainage. If you have any kind of forge drainage or gravity drainage issue, those are the two phone numbers to call there. Pollution Control, Roads and Bridges. If anybody wants to take a picture for this, I'll leave it up for a quick second for y'all. I will actually put it up on the parish page this week, so everyone will be able to go there and pull it up with these explanations. And we'll be putting out a graphic on Facebook so that anyone can go to that and see exactly what you need to call for whatever problem you may have. I'll go over more. And then here's the rest. Couldn't fit them all in one. Department of Salways, Hazardous Ocelot Waste, which is Mr. Clay here, Bulky Waste, the drop-off for Ashland, Shreve, Montague Athletics and Leisure, again, which is Mr. Jim Wendell, Department Utilities, Animal Shelter, Planning and Zoning, Nuisance and Abatement, Flood Pain Management, the Permit Office, Planning Commission, Recovery Assistance and Mitigation, and Zoning and Land Use. So I'll let y'all take all those numbers there. If anybody wants to take a picture, I'll give you a minute. But these are just some of the things. If you have any kind of issue in Terrebonne Parish, there's people you can call. Right now, we are working on a system to where you no longer would have to call in and you would be able to make a request online. As Mr. Clay will talk to you, that's something his guys have been moving towards to very heavily the last two, three years. The program they have now to submit a request online through your phone or through an app is not super user-friendly. So it's not easy for anyone to just get on their phone and submit a request. So that's something we're working over the next couple of years, hopefully within the next year. We'll make a lot of these changes where people can go online. If you have a drainage issue, you can put it in, you'll get a number, you can track your ticket, see how long your ticket's been in the system. So that way, when people do, it all goes back to accountability, like Mr. Carl said, and it's been something that President Bajirao has really put an emphasis on since I've come into office with him, tracking everything, making everything measurable, so that when we do, you do put in a request, you have this number. If it's six months down the road and you have no, any kind of update on it at all, there's proof. So then there's always something to hold accountable. There's always someone to hold accountable. So you don't have to worry about you being left at the wayside or falling through the cracks. If everything's online, if everything's in a system that can be tracked, measured all the time, the likelihood of that happening is slim to none. But I will let y'all get to the people y'all really want to ask questions to, and like I said, I'd be real short and sweet. Thank y'all.
I tried a number of times to do the thing with violence. Mr. Joe Harris worked with the kids with behavior problems. We've actually knit several things in different locations. And to be honest with you, the people in my district, they don't show up. They don't vote. And to be honest with you, to keep it real with you, just recently, it didn't seem as if your vote mattered because you didn't go out and vote in the proper numbers to represent yourselves. So when you, when I get that phone call at three o'clock in the afternoon on a Friday, the parish closes at four. Nothing I can do for you. If you've had that letter from nuisance and abatement for two months, you called me today that we're going to have council meeting. You want me to help you? How can I help you? I do read the list and I do my best to contact people. But we bring it to you. I want to recognize Mr. Kevin Thompson, Attorney in Law in the City of Homa. Also, would like to acknowledge Ms. Suzette Beckneris, Law Office. So this is the point, the point where we at right here. Members of the public, and I know as much as y'all dog me out, this is your opportunity right now. You come to this mic, you got one minute to ask your question or state your case. And then we're going to go to the next person. This panel, they're going to take notes. According to the program, we'll go by the program that can answer your questions. This is not a back and forth, back and forth. We want to get information. But the most important thing I want out of this group of people here is to speak your mind. Because if I had to turn myself this way and I'm fighting for y'all, I am a representative of the people. But am I a fair representative of the people? I don't cut no deals. I don't do the other deal. Because when I get to this point right here, when people have different viewpoints, for me, I have to explain my position. I have to get the right information out there to achieve the objective of freedom, justice, and equality in Terrebonne Parish. So number one, may I have to vote? Vote wisely. I'm not telling you who to vote for, who not to vote for, and whenever you vote, well, just vote. So part of your voice is at this mic. First question, first person?
Okay, as I said, my name is Clarence Williams, and I'm here to answer some, ask some questions on behalf of the ACP Economic Development Component. The first question is, as it goes to the CBGR activities that are being addressed at this time, the first question is, do all the activities have to be related to IDA-related damages, if I may, or IDA-related interests? And if so, to embellish that question, if some of the programs, if I may, have been approved prior to IDA, are they eligible to receive benefits through CDBG funds? Also, in the package that shows the different areas that, boundaries, if I may, that are going to be impacted via these funds, it's kind of interesting that there's really no clear definition of where those locations are. There's nothing related to streets. There's nothing related to population, as is requested in the CBGD documents. My concern there is how can we be in compliance if indeed we're not using enough data, enough information to make the assessments of of specific areas where work and our projects should be performed? Another question I've got is relative to the Biden executive order, which goes into effect in 2025. There's approximately seventy-five to seventy-six million dollars that's coming to Terrebonne Parish. And this is, what these funds are for is to try and create equitable outcomes for parish residents and citizens, all parish residents and citizens. Now, the question to you folks, is any preparation being made to create an equitable approach? Because right now, there is none. And the last question to everybody, if you don't feel that your interest and or the, there's a comprehensive a comprehensive approach to applying the CDBG funds, you can go directly to the CDBG officials and complain. And if you complain, and if your complaint can be recognized and and proven, there's going to be some consequences. So I'll leave you with that.
Good evening. My name is Darlene Williams. I'm here to advocate for sewage, maybe city sewer in Cortez, it's up near Shreve. It's called Abbott Hughes, Abbott Hughes Subdivision. And I really wanted to, you guys, to put it on your agenda to see what we can do because right now is 2024, and they never had city sewer there. I know one time Cora said that they brought it up, but nobody came to the meeting to defend that. So that's why I'm here today. So, you know, other people talking about it, but nobody wants to come. But they're really serious about trying to get the city sewer. And the second thing I have is Linda Ann Street in Gray, where I live. Like about maybe ten years ago, it used to flood at the end of the street. But I don't know that there's some kind of reconstruction or something. Now the water is coming really toward the front. I live at 312. Luckily, my house sits up high off the road, but the roads are flooded. It only, it starts to rain like about maybe ten or fifteen minutes reward, and the flood is up there near 312. And the third thing I have is that the road there is so bad. When you turn into Linda Ann Street, there's a huge hole. It was raining the other night, and I knew the hole was there, and I thought I was going to miss it. But I ran straight into hole. I damaged my rim on my BMW, and I damaged a tire. So I'm sure other people probably have had the same problem. So that's all I wanted to say, and I really appreciate y'all listening to me. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Anthony Rain. I reside at 3593 Highway 316 in Gray, Louisiana. And I'm I'm a sports fanatic, okay? And I understand that we're utilizing the sports complex on 311. And we're shifting everything over there. So is we going to provide that facility for all the sports of Terrebonne Parish? Because what we're probably having now is the district is not allowing us to use those facilities because they're saying the parish and the parish recreation director is not scheduling nothing in the districts. Okay, we have grandmothers, grandfathers, okay, that want to see their kids play at Shreve Gym, Montague Gym, their football field, their soccer field. So are we going to take everything and shift it to one part of the parish and utilize, which is fine? I don't want to kill our local facilities. I want our parks and grounds to be utilized every day. I'd rather see them utilized and locked up with chains and locks on them because that way the kids will have somewhere to go. So it's so when we utilize a Shreve team, we can use Shreve to practice instead of going way over here. Everybody don't have a vehicle. At your Montague, we playing flag football. Montague has to come all the way over here to 311 to practice. Gray has to come all the way over here to practice. When we have fields in Gray, we have fields in Shreve, we have fields in the middle of Homa. So can we put some of those practices and utilize those fields too? All we want to, we, I don't want to kill the local fields. I want them to be utilized, the gyms, the parks, the soccer fields, the baseball fields. The gyms, the parks, the soccer fields, the baseball fields. And I don't want my kids to travel outside of their district every night. It's not fair for a working parent to have a six o'clock practice on the other side of town and have, and live in, live on this side of town. They're not gonna make it every night. So can we, can we just utilize our facilities too? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dawn Johnson. I live in the Gray area. I'm a part of the Gray Improvement Committee. And one of my questions is dealing with the underserved. And what I would like to know is, with the underserved in Terrebonne Parish, how did you determine who and what area is considered the underserved and the low to moderate income?
Let me say this also. The reason why we are here at the Civic Center, June's Auditorium was going on under some repairs. I'm not trying to schedule. Also, the municipal auditorium was to be having some repairs. So this is the next best place that we had available to give a town hall. Last year, I gave it around the same time. And I think what we want to do is really get the people input. But then, we have council meetings, and people say, "Well, I don't know. I didn't see HTV." Martin actually televised them. I try to get all the information out there that's just necessary. The people in District Two, I need you to get involved in what's going on around. I'm only one person. Sometime I can get a phone call at 5:00 in the morning, somebody just ringing me out, ringing me out, they don't even say good morning. So, I'm a human being too. That's, that's my mother right there. You just can't call, "I'm gonna teach you and bring everything out here for you." These people, they took their time. And it, I know I'm good looking, all y'all love me to death, y'all out here for me. I want you to be out here for yourself. If you, if you got a feeling, a lack of representation, a lack of this and a lack of that, you got the information that you want to know? You gonna make the complaint? This is your opportunity to make your complaint.
Good evening, everyone. Since Ida passed us on, I noticed that communities are being changed every day. I see more and more empty lots. I see more and more homes being torn down. So, I'm wondering, and I'm going to share my question to individuals particularly. Kelly, this is for your department. I recall years ago, we used to have a document, the instrument of usufruct. Okay? Usufruct tend to make it a little easier for families to move forward and get work done on their, on their homes. And of course, there were some prerequisites to those dollars that they couldn't sell it after so many years. So what I'm asking is that, Kelly, along with you at administration, that you guys maybe can revisit that? That people can once again try to at least get their homes done without getting 100% of their loved ones to sign on? Okay? And the other thing is that, can you guys bring us up to date in terms of funding that's available for those individuals to reconstruct their homes? And also, I noticed that there's a particular plat that being used to rebuild these homes, and they build them higher, which I tend to agree with. But of course, I've heard complaints from people that it doesn't quite fit in with the structure of their communities because those homes are now higher. But I certainly understand that because the great one would come sooner or later. Next one, administration. I would like to know, what is the relationship between administration and these various rec departments? Because I noticed through, when Wendell gave his report, I noticed that as far as the facilities are concerned, there seems to be a gap or limitation there in terms of what they can do, and that's forward over to the various rec districts. But I do understand that although there are rec districts, the uses of the land, I'm quite sure your program would have to use those facilities. And as Mr. Rainey mentioned, when he was up here, I too would love to see these parks throughout this district utilized. I see too many parks that just seem to be dormant, they're not being used. It reminds me when I was coming up, that all these parks utilized, and of course, they was all full at any given time. So I would like to, for administration, to look into possibility of finding out what is the reason, what is that stumbling block that's stopping or preventing public from using those facilities? And I've also heard that is a thing of insurance. So if it is insurance that's stopping the public from using it, is it, is it that an individual would have to have a group activities that would trigger the use of insurance? So if I would gather in the park with maybe 20, 25 of my friends, and we want to get out there and just have a good time, play some balls or anything like that, would that consider us to be a group which would trigger insurance? You know? So we need to get some clarification on that. All right? Thank you.
I can add on to that. That was a situation that I wanted to look into was, it was a holiday. And a guy called me, said, "Well, who do I speak with?" Directing him to the proper person in the recreation district. It was a holiday. They closed the park. I didn't understand that, so we're going further down that. Any more questions? Mr. Johnson?
My name is Kenneth Johnson. I'm a resident of the east side of Homer. Where me and my colleagues, we have some nonprofits that we would like to collaborate with the parish to get some things done. And we would like to privately speak with, if it's possible, speak with parish president Bazrau and some other colleagues of his to get these things done, see how the parish can help us and assist us with getting these things done for the kids of the parish. And not just of the east side, we're talking about the whole entire community. Gibson, the Gray area, Montague, Berg, the east side of Homer, west side of Homer, all districts. And we want to collaborate with the parish to see if we can get these things accomplished. I want to know how we can get some private meeting with you to speak with you about these things and see how we can get these things accomplished.
Today's social media segment is brought to you by Alford and Associates for all of your insurance needs. CIS, Cardiovascular Institute of the South, the highest quality cardiovascular care available. Barker Honda, the Barker family tradition of quality.
The other part about me being here, and we're finna go to the panel now because, you know, Mr. Bazrau has showed up several times where I was offering an opportunity to get information and to bridge the gap. And mind you, realistically speaking, one particular time was the Juneteenth. And somehow or another, I think he kind of feels the way I kind of feel sometime when I go to events and I have to dress like this, but even though I like to wear my little jeans with the holes in them and play dominoes. Sometime, I don't know, we're gonna have it up there again, those hands that were up there, and those, that vision that it had. Realistically, if the person looks down and say, "Well, why are we doing this at municipal?" Or "Why are we doing this at the Bayou Sports Park? How come we're not doing this in Dumars? What's wrong with Scott Lane? What's wrong with the parks that on the center circle? Why Juneteenth? Why celebrate Juneteenth?" And I think it came out that we celebrate Cinco de Mayo. We celebrate the Irish parade. We have all other parades. Therefore, why not Juneteenth? So, to come and he realized, I feel in my heart, he didn't necessarily say it, but I told him, said, "Man, look, we have two different cultures here. And we have to bring those cultures together. That's the only way we're gonna make it." Mr. Johnson just came, said he was on the east side, but he wants something for Gibson. And Terrebonne Parish has come together from the 50s and the 60s, and we have people that went to Rose Lawn, some people still in Gibson, waterproof, where I'm from, I can't even fool those 2.5 or 1.5 million dollar houses. We got Woolerdale, we got Stovall, we got Prince Collins. We're all in one big family. So, when we're in government, some of the people that may, he may run into, and I guess I might be speaking for him, but I feel this in my heart, he, he gets it, he knows, I get it, because I got some, some people in my community, they have done some damage to me too. So therefore, it's not about color, it's about who's gonna do the right thing. But our power is here. When I wake up and look in the morning, I know who I am, I know what I represent. I represent good morals and patriotic values. But I do represent the people. So the first person on the agenda is Mr. Corley, and we're Tita.
Thank you, Mr. Corley. I appreciate you inviting us, inviting me to come and speak to you guys. And going through the, going through the topics, some of these are out of my area of expertise or area of responsibility with the CDBG funding, the DR things. I'm gonna definitely push that to the parish president. He's got the, he's got the most say-so on it. And Mr. Clarence, on the, on the Biden funding for 2025, certainly it's something that we can look into and do some research on and see how that would fall into Tita's, Tita's area of responsibility for that. So we'll certainly appreciate you bringing that to our attention to, to ask those questions On the roads and bridges, that's for, or the road condition, Ms. Williams, you know, that, that falls outside of, out of our area of expertise as well. And Mr. Rainey, I'm sure that the, I'm sure that the Quality of Life Department can address some of the questions that you brought up as well. Mr. Tillman, I think it falls under the same thing. The administration relationship with, with the rest rec districts, the funding for the rebuild and for the demolished houses in the, in the parish. I know that there's, there's a lot of programs involved that are going on out there. And I think you bring up a very good point about the usufruct of a property that's been passed down generationally. It may not be the owners who, who were given that house to live in. It's certainly something that, that should be, should be brought back up and maybe looked back into. And I think the parks and recreation, a lot of that stuff, and I see the passion for the people who come and speak about what's important to them when they were kids and raised, and even the younger generations that come through it as well. And Mr. Johnson, as far as your nonprofit, I'm not sure what, what type of nonprofit that it is, but if, if parish president Bazrau invites me to the table, I'll certainly be there to, to help you guys in any way that we possibly can with programs that may fit something that you're looking for.
Good afternoon, Mr. Tillman. I'm gonna answer your questions. I also do see a lot of empty lots and houses in disrepair in our parish. At one time, usufruct was allowable, but with the CDBG, and I'm talking about the CDBG entitlement, not CDBG disaster, and the home program that is no longer allowable, they do require that someone has sole ownership of a property. And they also want us to either file a mortgage or a lien to protect the federal government's money. We are working through our housing rehab program right now because with the new maps, the majority of the homes in Terrebonne Parish that are on our rehab list are now in a flood hazard area. So we're gonna have to work through those processes as well because HUD requires that if we put more than $5,000 into a home, then that home has to have flood insurance. So that's some things we're talking about in our office and we're trying to work through as well because that's also gonna be a hindrance for low-income people if they have to have flood insurance on their homes. You talked about, I think, funding available to rebuild homes. After Hurricane Gustaf and Ike, the parish received direct allocations of HUD funding. We got $10 million for rental housing repairs and rebuilding. But that was before the Louisiana Housing Corporation was created. So now HUD sends all their federal funding to the state, and the state decides how they allocate funding out. So for Hurricane Ida, Terrebonne Parish didn't receive any housing money. The state handled all those programs. They had the Restore LA program. We've asked the states to reconsider, we've asked HUD to reconsider, but to date, that hasn't happened. I'm not the planning and zoning director, but you did ask about the elevation requirements. I know if you apply for a permit to build a new home, or if you're repairing a home and the cost of the repairs are more than 50% of the value of the home, then you're required to elevate to the current FEMA standards.
You know, the most frequent questions I'm asked, what are you gonna do with the high-rise? What are you gonna do with the center of the circle? What are you gonna do with Section 8 and stuff like that? She does not actually run Section 8 of the high-rise and everything like that. Do you have any information that you can give anyone that's associated, like those people that had vouchers, perhaps, for the high-rise and what position they're in?
Okay. I can do that. So after Hurricane Ida, my department applied for vouchers to try to rehouse the people that were living in Bayou Towers. To date, we have rehoused 80 citizens that were living in Bayou Towers. Typically, when you get a housing voucher, you, you get a voucher for 90 days. If you're disabled, you can request an extension for another 90 days. But we continually extended the vouchers because housing was not available in Terrebonne. A lot of our vulnerable senior citizens did not want to move out of Terrebonne, and I totally understand that. But at some point, HUD was like, "That's enough. You have to give them a definite deadline. You cannot extend these vouchers anymore." So we have rehoused 80 of the 365 of the people that were living there.
Yes, my name is Clay Nakam. I'm the Solid Waste Vegetation Director. Like Mr. Lee was saying earlier, we do have a website that you can go on, report your debris. We are a call for service for debris. So if you have a, a, a small residential debris pile at your yard that you need picked up at curbside, we recommend that you try to call it into us or go on the website, and we put that all in. If you give us your email or phone number, that's taken into our new system that we have, and when the project is complete, you get a notification that is complete. Garbage cans, you have garbage cans that needs replacement. We, you know, we replace them free of charge. We try to get the people that can, can to bring them in to change them out, and they can be picked up at, changed out at any one of the residential locations of the one in Shreve, on Alacuba Road, Montague, Crochetville, and then at our office at the Ashland Landfield Road. Also, I handle the vegetation, roadside cutting for parish roads. Right now, we're on about a 400. Right now, we're on about a 40-day turnaround cycle for residents that live in Gibson. We just finished the Gibson area last week. We're moving, and we're gonna move toward Shreve and all that. And that's the way we move it. And then once they finish that, they go back to Gibson and start another route. But that, that route for roadside cutting, rough cutting is about a 40-day cycle right now. That's about all I have.
Yeah, and I'm surprised, look, some of the folk that I was supposed to, that I represent, they always complaining about the grass and when the grass is wrong, a big cut and stuff like that, even when it's raining. Sometime we make requests to the government or to me. It doesn't make any sense when you have a bunch of water and you're gonna put a tractor in there and you're gonna spend all day getting the tractors out of the water and the mud. So we have to be realistic about that. And hopefully, Mr. Nakam, he does well. And Mr. Nakam, when we have debris to be picked up and they're, and they don't have any utilities hooked up to that particular property.
The, that is not eligible. That's the homeowner or the property owner's responsibility to haul that off. We cater to light residential that participate in the garbage collection system. We also only pick up light, up to 15 cubic yards of vegetative debris at commercial locations if they participate in the garbage collection system, the parish garbage collection.
At this time, we're gonna give the money to Senator Fessy. Senator Fessy, he's been here. And if he has some things that he has to say, or what he've heard, we're gonna hear from Senator Fessy.
Thank you. Glad to be here and glad to bring down some of the things we're doing at the state. I will have to say, far as Terrebonne and Lafouche Parish, my district that I represent, we did bring down some of the most money out of all the parishes in the state to Terrebonne and Lafouche to get a lot of things done in the area. So up there, as our complete delegation that you have representing Terrebonne and Lafouche, we're up there trying to get as much money and get as many repairs done. I know one of the biggest complaints right now is grass cutting. But being so wet, the contractors are steadily getting stuck. So, you know, if they say they coming, they may be stuck in a hole somewhere. So they are working at it and trying to get the grass down. Now, one of the legislation that was most important to me that I brought to our area for our whole state was we worked as a team and we, we put together a number of, a number of bills. And one of my bills was on seafood safety. We've kind of lost our way in keeping our domestic catches not being outsold by all the imported. And the imported seafood is in very bad, I guess, very bad shape for as how they're raising in other countries. They're raising the seafood in sewer ponds and many things like that. So I'd been trying to get a bill passed for a number of years through natural resources. But I got to figuring out how bad and how bad it is to our health on imported seafood that I made it a seafood safety bill and went through the health side of the delegation, worked hard putting things together. And what we did do was separate domestic seafood from imported seafood to where we can start testing the imported seafood and see what's all the bad chemicals and everything they're putting in it. And I advise you to make sure you pay attention in restaurants and everywhere that you really get a good, a good voice on making sure that we eating domestic seafood from the United States. Because they're, they're feeding a lot of these, a lot of these ponds is full of antibiotics and everything. And the mayor, the mayor of Grand Isle puts it pretty wise about imported seafood, imported shrimp. He said he buys a pound of imported shrimp every year and he puts it in his freezer. And he said, instead of going to the doctor, I just break out one of the shrimp and I eat that because I know I'm gonna get enough antibiotics and not have to go to the doctor. So that's really how bad it is. And our federal government is failing us. Europe tests 50% of all imported seafood. Guess what United States does? Less than 2%. And so they're just piling the imported seafood in on us. It's a lot of, a lot of, even your crawfish now, it says this tipito is crawfish, but it was, it was raised in China. You know, so you really need to pay attention on what we're doing. So that was one of my important bills that we worked as a team, where there's actually five bills altogether to try to help getting this on the right track. And I got with the Lieutenant Governor, Billy Nungesser. And he's gonna promote that Louisiana has the safest seafood in the nation since our federal government is failing us. So that was an important thing there. And if y'all got any other questions on anything else, I'd be glad to answer. I know we did a lot of good legislation this year, got a lot of stuff passed to improve our state between schools and recreation and everything else.
Thank you. And thank you for showing up. He's always been very, very supportive. The next person, I had the pleasure of serving four years with Ms. Jessica Domenech. We recently had a conversation about some things that she's gonna be doing. And so before Ms. Domenech, Ms. Merle Amadee was another state representative. She wasn't feeling too well today, so she was not able to attend. How you doing, Ms. Wesley? I see you back there. I know you made a phone call with me, so I'm gonna get to you. Ms. Domenech.
Thank you, Mr. Harding, and I appreciate your invitation to be here tonight. And it's an honor to be here in front of this great group of people and with all these esteemed colleagues up here. I miss the parish stuff. I miss, you know, being part of the council. But we have a bigger job to do on the state level. And so I appreciate everybody's support on that level. And just to kind of piggyback on what Senator Fessy said, we've done a lot this year and we've got a lot to work on growing into this next year. You know, we've got a new governor, we've got a new parish president. And so there's a lot of growth here. And so just a few things that I wanted to kind of touch bases on. We had, we recognize that our roads and bridges in the entire state are absolutely deplorable. And we know the roads and bridges, the state roads and bridges in Terrebonne Parish need some definite attention. So for District 53, and I want to speak specifically on District 53, which is almost the entire east side of Homa plus downtown and Lisa Park. And so that kind of gives you an idea of what District 53 is. But for District 53 specifically, we were able to acquire funding this, this year in this term to do overlays on Highway 55, Highway 56, Highway 315, as well as the entire Grand Caillou. So basically from Highway 24 all the way down until the end of Dulack, we're gonna be able to, to resurface those roads. And so that's gonna be very big for, for those residents. Grass cutting is another thing that we hear. We talked a little bit about grass cutting earlier. We actually took a district-wide tour with one of our government liaisons with EOTD last week. And I just wanted him to see the condition that a lot of our areas are in. And so of course, we were able to fast pace some of that. So one of the biggest problem areas we haven't, I see my colleague back there from Bayou du Large. We're gonna get Bayou du Large cut, but they're gonna start tomorrow actually on Bayou du Large, which I know was a big safety issue. And I apologize, I don't represent a lot of the gray areas, so I don't have a lot of information for that area. One big thing that happened too is we had some redistricting that happened. And I know a lot of people get anxious when redistricting happens. We were anxious as well. But part of the redistricting process is our Congress representatives, so our Congressman in Washington DC is gonna actually change for this election cycle. So we were represented by Garrett Graves and Steve Scalise. And our new Congressman will be Congressman Clay Higgins. I've met with the Congressman and definitely, you know, emphasize the importance of coastal restoration, the importance of the needs that we have in this area. And so hopefully, we'll be able to work with him. But that's gonna be something that you're gonna see on your ballots coming up. That's gonna be a little bit different. You're gonna think, oh, I used to vote for this person. And I used to vote for either Garrett Graves or Steve Scalise. So just when you see that, just know that that's part of that redistricting that happened this past year. That was pretty big. Another thing that we've been working on and, you know, you can't eat an elephant in one bite, right? And so that's what, how I feel about insurance. And we're in a huge insurance crisis in the state of Louisiana. A lot of us can't afford our insurance, myself included. So we've done a lot of work, but we've got more work to do over the next few years. I have asked our Insurance Commissioner, Tim Temple, to come to Terrebonne Parish. And he is, he's, he's coming. We're gonna have a town hall on August 20th. If you're a constituent of mine, I sent out a mailer. You would've got it the last week of the week before. And they had to save the date on that mailer. I'll put something out on social media. I'll also send it to the parish. That way they can put it on their website as well. That way we can promote that event. But the Commissioner is coming, August 20th, he'll be 6:00 PM at Williams Gym. And so he'll be there, come, ask questions, you know, get the information because that's something really important for all of us. And then the other thing that I just wanted to touch bases on, and I know Senator Fessy said we are able to bring a lot of money into the parish and we're very proud of that. One thing that we've seen over the last four years that I've been here anyway, was a lot of money going into Bayou Country and not a lot of money going into some other areas. And so since I now represent the area that surrounds the Air Base Park, I've decided to use the Air Base Park as kind of my pet project. And every year, we get a little extra money. It's not a whole lot, but it's a little bit. And so I was able to secure some money to go ahead and build bathrooms at our splash pad at the Air Base Park. And then I will commit in front of you guys today that every dollar of extra money that I get for the next four years, we will put into the airbase. We've got a great master plan for the airbase that does have mixed-use soccer and football fields as well as I'd like to build a, what I kind of call a destination playground at the Air Base Park. And so people will want to come to that area and they're gonna want to bring their families and spend time there. And so we've got a great plan and so I've got some money to get started. I hope that the parish puts some input as well on that project also. But it is something that I can commit to you guys, that we're gonna invest in the east side of Homa because we haven't had a big investment in that area in a very long time. And so I want to be able to do that for you guys. And once again, my office is always available. So if you need anything, you can definitely give us a call. But I do appreciate every one of you.
Okay, I'll address the couple of Quality of Life questions that we presented. We do have one sports season that is exclusively played at Bayou Country that was mentioned, and that is flag football, that the games actually start tomorrow. The reasoning behind that, as I said during my presentation, we are at the mercy of recreation districts as far as what is available, what is repaired and what we can use. So we are, just like every member of the public, when we want to use a reg district, whether it's a gym, a field, we have to call in, get permission, schedule everything out. So at the current time, we have our conditioning going on for tackle football, recreation tackle football. And we also have some schools that use recreation facilities for school ball. So areas like Montague have three different age groups practicing TPR tackle football. And we also have Montague Middle that uses that as their football field. Therefore, we have to have the flag football exclusively at Bayou Country because there are not enough football fields in the remaining recreation districts. We have teams in Shreve using the Shreve Fields. Same thing around the Oakshire area, Broadmoor area, Lisa Park. So we do have to have flag football exclusively at Bayou Country. But the rest of the stickball games, whether it's a gym with volleyball, basketball, we do spread that around the parish. Before we start a season, we have to call all the reg districts and find out what's available. And we schedule to what is available at the time. The second thing was, was what can administration do about the, the reg districts and Quality of Life as far as getting along? As I mentioned in my, my presentation, we are finally, or we do finally have a seat at the table with these recreation districts and are repairing relationships that, that weren't so great before. There's plenty of room for improvement, but at least we are all together on the same page talking now. So the administration, which is President Bazaron, I fall in Quality of Life under his realm of control. The recreation districts answer to individual parish councilmen depending on what district it is. But we are at least coming together now as a council, as an administration, as departments, as districts, and starting to have those tough conversations and trying to repair what is, has been wrong for years. I'll be around after the meeting if anybody wants to discuss that. Mr. Johnson, also you spoke of having a nonprofit. Quality of Life is in the process of creating a nonprofit as well. And what that's for, we have several businesses and several community leaders and several people from the community who will give us money and say, okay, we know that the Dumas team doesn't have money for shoes for their basketball team. We want to give you $600 to make sure those kids have shoes. If they donate the money to me as the parish, the only way I have to cycle that money through is to give it to the parish finance department. Then it becomes public money and for ethics laws, I'm no longer able to spend it on a team's shoes. I have to spend it on the whole program. So we're creating a nonprofit that assists in things like that. And I know you mentioned kids a couple of times. But if you get with me after, I'll exchange contact information with you. We can talk on the phone, we can meet. If it's something that needs to be escalated to the parish president because it's out of athletics and leisure or cultural enrichment, I'd be more than happy to assist you in setting up, you know, some time with, with the parish president as well. So I'll be around after if anybody has any more input or any questions. And I thank you guys.
All right, well, Carley introduced me as his friend and I appreciate that. We're both fellow boat rowers, right? We're rowing the boat together. And I want to thank everybody for being out here. I think time's our most valuable resource and I appreciate you giving us some of yours. To me, this is, what I talked about when I was running for office was getting the right people in the room, having conversations and fixing issues. I also have to give kudos to our legislative delegation. If you haven't been to Baton Rouge to see how that system works, it's basically like a year's worth of work in about two or three months. And so I really commend them on, on being able to follow the budget process with the state for the first time and capital outlay and all the bills that they work hard on. That process, if you hadn't seen that before, I think you need to go check it out. And it's very, very, it's just tremendous, some of the work that gets done with so many different people in so many different directions. And, and the money that was brought to our region, we could not do it without our legislative delegation. And our federal delegation's also doing some great work there. So, so I'm gonna go into some of these questions to kind of follow up on what Jim was talking about. I'll do this first. The conversation about the Bayou Country Sportsplex being the hub of everything is not what we look at when it comes to Quality of Life and Athletics and Leisure in the parish, right? The whole concept of creating Quality of Life was to have every person, no matter where they live, no matter how old they are, no matter their demographic background, have equal opportunities to better Quality of Life. And so when we look at what the Bayou Country Sportsplex is, is, and from my perspective, I'm not gonna speak for anybody else, but to me, it is more of an economic driver to work on getting some of these tournaments, some of these other things, get money coming into the parish. And also working within, having a facility that maybe in some situations, for example, like Reg District 8, then have a pool, right? That they can come, maybe there's a pool there for some of these reg districts that don't have all the same facilities. And that's one of the things that I like to look at is, what do we have to do to have things more standardized amongst all the reg districts, right? Why does a reg district have a pool or not have a pool? Or have a pavilion, not have a pavilion? And so working closely with the reg districts, and Jim, I think, has done a great job of that. We're also looking has done a great job of that. We're also looking at doing some things with some ordinances to put a little more teeth into the rec advisory board and have it to where they're driving the conversation of, of what's needed. How do we, how are rec districts work together? How do we share resources? And, and just help each other out. And so to say that, you know, the rec director's not scheduling in the district, I had this conversation prior to being elected and since I've been elected. And we're requiring some things of the rec districts, and we're not getting feedback. We're not getting questions answered. We're not getting some of the things we need. And so Jim's going to these rec districts and saying, hey, what can we do to work better together? What can we do to make sure that the kids in your area can do things in your area? And, and what can we do, again, to work together and build that relationship? So, you know, to hear that, you know, everything's all downtown, or everything is just Bayou Country Sportsplex, that is not the case. We are working on moving Terrebonne Parish forward as a whole. And so I think I addressed those. And then when I look at, when you look at that breakdown of quality of life, and we can share that with everybody as far as where things go, and we talk about nonprofits, you know, I believe that that's what culture, culture enrichment ends up being. I know it's, we took some of the things that currently existed and stuck it there, but that's just the first step. We're going to go through and say, what does it look like for cultural enrichment throughout the parish? What does it look like for athletics and leisure throughout the parish? What does it look like for venues and destinations throughout the parish? Some efficiencies, sharing some resources. Again, to be able to schedule a facility that the parish government can manage scheduling of in one place. What's your date? Okay, we've got this available, that available, this available, right? We're going through and evaluating the policies that are in place that it takes to schedule these places. And, and we're trying to make it as easy as possible to where it's not, it's not complicated. It's easy to use through a website or a phone call and allow, again, more accessibility to our facilities, both that belong to our rec districts and belong to the parish. So I'll go through the questions now, subbing in for both Chris and David who had personal issues. If they could have been here, they would have. And so we have some of our directors here. Joe Harris in the back, I don't know if he was mentioned yet, I see him. Steve Palmville deals with public safety. And so I want to thank everybody for making the time to do this. This right here should show you that's important to all of our directors, all of our parish employees, to make Terrebonne Parish better. So from a CDBGDR perspective, it is IDA related. And when it comes to the funding that we still don't have, by the way, so it was, we had to have an allocation turned in. We did one in January. We had a second allocation of what we call a plan. So it wasn't even, it wasn't an application, we had to turn in plans. And so the first allocation was turned in in January, the second allocation was turned in in March. We then got questions on the first allocation that we started to clarify that had a June 19th due date. And before we could turn in the question, the answers to those questions on June 19th, they said, we're going to make both allocation one and allocation two due in November, but that we don't have to wait till November to turn in those applications. So we have start, we're in a process of turning in applications for all the things that were listed that we presented at the council meeting, so that we can work on getting the funding, which I'm hoping to have some of this funding coming in by the end of the year, right? So to hear, we have CDBGDR funding, it's $117 million. We understand it might be more, but as of right now, we're working on getting that first application in because we had to get the plans approved, get those questions answered, and then they changed the program on us. And so we're trying to work within what the state allows. That's OCD, Office of Community Development, and what they're saying we need to turn in and where we need to turn it in, right? So as we go through those applications, the question was, is how do we pick the areas, right? And the, the good example I like to give for this is, there's a water line that has been patched and patched and patched that feeds the east side of Homa. When I look at needs and the fact that you need to have good, clean drinking water, bathe, water to bathe in, water to wash your clothes in, we're going to do a line that's going to run from the west side to the east side, technically not in the east side, but servicing the east side. So that's something that's going to benefit that area of town to give them a functional drinking source before the one we have fails, because it's been patched upon, patched upon, patched, right? And that's one of the, that's one of the best examples that I can give. You know, another program we're going to have is small business grants. That's parish wide. You know, we're going to have an incubator that we're working on with Fletcher. It's going to be housed downtown, but it's parish wide, right? We're working on some seafood assistance parish wide. So we have some things that are designated for certain areas, but we have some things that, you know, again, if you make an improvement to something like sewer, or something like electricity, that might be in downtown Homa. And I might be behind, you know, off of St. Louis Canal Road, but that's going to be to help service the entire area. Going down the line for the executive order, I want to make sure I'm understanding, is that the infrastructure executive order? Because when you say 75 million for Terrebonne Parish, there was a conversation at a council meeting that was 75 million, but it was for the entire nation. It's not 75 million for Terrebonne Parish. But if you want to have a conversation after about what exact executive order that is, we can make sure I get the information to answer that question. But that's the conversation I remember in the past few months that we had on a Biden executive order for 75 million. So, and I give you all examples. We got made, so we have over 900 derelict vessels in all of our bayous. And so we figuring out ways to get money to pick those vessels up. We also have over 500 derelict structures that need to be torn down, also looking for money to get those buildings demoed and, and put in, you know, and disposed of. But when you look at, there is a grant that came out with NOAA for $7 million for, for derelict vessels. That's for the entire country. So they gave, that's a $7 million grant for the entire country. That goes quick. And the most you can get for one area is a million dollars. We're going to apply for it, but I don't think that's going to be the final answer that we have for what we got to do for derelict vessels. City sewer, so we have a few things going on related to city sewer. One of the first things we did is we started doing a clean out of Bayou Terrebonne. The reason why we started a Bayou Terrebonne is that we had some projects that were already done. And so we're looking to kind of get, every time we do something, what's the best bang for the buck? So we went from Lafayette Street to West Side Boulevard, and we took down some trees that were leaning, got some more trash that was in place, cleaned that out, and, and used the funding we had available to do that. We have another project of funding that's already been allocated somewhere between a high seven and low eight million dollars. That is going to be to help maintain dredge. And we're not talking where, you know, when I get a, a pipe in there, a crane in there in every spot, but we want to get better water flow in Bayou Terrebonne, starting from the parish line down. The problem with that, there's a lot of problems from the parish line to Bayou La Fouch, right? So if you, if you go looking between the bridges in Tibbetto, where Bayou La Fouch is, there's a crack about this big of the water that feeds that eventually makes its way down to Bayou Terrebonne, right? So we're looking at other ways to get more water into Bayou Terrebonne. We have two or three different options we're looking at. And Noah, my chief administrative officer, went and looked at something Friday of a pump that used to be run to get water from Bayou St. Louis into Bayou Terrebonne. And we have a very quick, low hanging fruit opportunity to get some water there. So when I look at sewage and I look at it, what I'm talking about right now, we have raw sewage dumping into Bayou Terrebonne. So we need to work on that. And, and the Water Works Group says that one, one way to do some of that is more water, right? So we're working on introducing more water to Bayou Terrebonne, and also cleaning up Bayou Terrebonne, working from, you know, downtown all the way to the parish line to some sort of dredge. So it might be three foot here, two foot there, six foot there, but making sure that both wastewater and stormwater have a place to go into Bayou Terrebonne. Now, when you look at, when we talk wastewater and sewer, one of the things we have with CDBGDR money that's going to go out throughout the parish is a wastewater study. What happens in a wastewater study is we identify this area needs this, this area needs that, we need a lift station here, we need a main sewer feed here. And we're going to go through, and we're not only going to have a wastewater study, but we have a stormwater study. And those two studies are going to tell us, you have this need, it's $10 million, it's $50 million. And then we could say, okay, where do you go, where do you got to find where that money's going to come from? And so again, we're having an opportunity to get money from the federal delegation side, from a state side with capital outlay and some other programs like CDBGDR. And so when we look into CDBGR, so some of these studies are going to service the entire parish to help see where the sewage opportunities are, because not only do we need to have the opportunity for more public sewage throughout the parish, but our system that's on the north side and our system on the south side, both need to be expanded to accept more sewage, right? And so we want to make sure that across the board, in these different communities and where it all ends up, that we have the facilities in place to do that. So going down to Linda Anne Street in Gray, the flooding, I have your address. We're going to look at what's changed, what's different. We've had a ton of rain. I know everybody's probably tired of hearing it, but we had some situations where we had four inches of rain in an hour. Our pumps do an inch the first hour and every half inch after that. And so we are, we are not stopping our pumps from running. We pump down in every area we can to the level we can pump down to prior to a rain event. And so there was a Facebook post that we didn't start pumping down until 12:30. Well, that was 12:30 in one area. So whatever we can pump down to, we get to something down to permitted legally and to make sure the pump don't, the system doesn't fail because there's not enough water holding the system back. So we navigate that. But we have some very hardworking, dedicated people that run around the parish every day, looking at the pumps, making sure they're maintained, making sure we have, you know, we have something that got built, and we have something that's not permitted that, you know, with ponds. Like we, there's no ordinance that controls ponds. Somebody could build a pond and affect drainage, and we might not be able to do anything at it, on it at all, and it becomes a civil matter. That could affect drainage, right? It could cause a street to flood in the front, east flood in the back. So I have that address, we're going to figure that out. And also with the hole, depending on where exactly it is, if you could show me on a map, I pulled it up. Show me exactly where that hole is, I'll find out who's responsible, we'll get that hole fixed. Going to, and this is kind of back on CDBGDR, with Mr. Johnson, the question on who is underserved? We are pulling that data from FEMA, it's the, I mean, the FEMA census data. That is what is required by us. When they talk about low, moderate income, they're giving us, this is the areas that you got to look at. And I know we've produced a map multiple times on the council meetings, but we have a map that shows what FEMA census data considers low to moderate income. And that's the areas that we are looking to serve with everything in CDBGDR. And again, so one thing I wanted to mention that Kelly did not, when they were talking about some houses are razed and some houses are not when it comes to all the rebuilding we're doing. So we had, actually had to petition Louisiana Housing Corporation to build things in a flood zone, which if I'm not mistaken, I'll make sure I say this right, is Parkwood, that originally they weren't going to allow homes to be built in Parkwood. So we had to petition the Louisiana Housing Corporation. They made a policy change that allows housing to be built, and that's going to have to be built up, but it's, it can be built. Whereas they weren't going to allow it to be built at all, even if we built it up. So unfortunately, in some of these areas, you're going to have things higher than it should be. But I can tell you from a FEMA perspective, we have one lawsuit that we got kicked out of that we're working to get back into. We have a second lawsuit that we're having a conversation on based on some things I'm talking about with infrastructure, all things that were declared by executive orders of the current administration. And we're looking at, we're doing what's called a clomer, which is giving the data. So FEMA is required to do maps every 10 years, and that's all they have to do. And so they were late on the, so the last map was 2009. Prior to that, it was supposed to be 2019. They didn't finish that stuff till 21, 22 due to COVID, some other issues. But anything where it comes to FEMA maps doesn't take in any data with levees, pump stations, and every other piece of work we have done since 2018. So we're in the process of going with FEMA right now to try to get them to accept more data since 2018. Now, this is not cheap. We're probably spending about a half million dollars in the long run, once this is said and done. For them to maybe tell us, sorry, nothing's changing. But we are working to do what we can from multiple fronts, having conversation with the, the group that is working on sustainable flood insurance, having conversations with our delegations. We are all, when you look at the fact that people at the federal delegation can't get meetings with FEMA, every time we're in a meeting, we're at a conference, and somebody asks a question, they go, we can't answer that, we can't answer that, we can't show you how we came up with that data. So what's happening right now, groups are reverse engineering and trying to figure out how FEMA came up with, what they came up with. And we're having to spend time and effort. And LSU is one of those working on it for state Louisiana right now, to reverse engineer their FEMA flood maps. And so there's about 10 different efforts that are going on at many different levels to try to figure out a way to make our insurance more affordable. The things that were done at the legislative level this year is, is moving in the right direction, doing the things that the other states are doing that are successful. And not all the changes we need to make were able to be made. There's still more that needs to happen. So it is multiple efforts that are going on. And so we are doing everything we can to help make sure we get housed. Look, I feel like we have a housing crisis, right? I'll talk a little bit about the Housing Authority. I went to a meeting, we're not getting enough information fast enough on what's going on with Bayou Towers, what's going on in Center Circle, right? So we had our planning and zoning group go to it because I asked, did we ever condemn the buildings? And so they did a walkthrough of the, of the towers. That tower has now been condemned according to the parish government. It has to be torn down. There was a possibility of it being sold and all kinds of other stuff. The longer that stuff takes, the longer it takes for us to get the housing. So we also made a few requests. One is, do we know how many residents are coming back? And do we know where we're planning on housing? The process that we did at Bayou Towers, we're also going to do at Center Circle. We're going to figure out which of those buildings are condemned and/or can't be rebuilt. If it has to be condemned, it's going to have to be condemned. If it can be rebuilt, what's the plan for getting it rebuilt? And if we had, you know, we had, you know, over 300 people in the towers, what does that number look like now? We had, I think it was 120 facilities, all of which have their own FEMA case, and we're having to work those individually with FEMA. But again, if the parish says this, this building's not habitable anymore, it has to be demoed, there's money available now that that should be demoed because we have to get that stuff removed before we could start building stuff back, right? But there's also a conversation with HUD that says they're not going to build a Bayou Towers again. They're probably going to build something that's three or four stories high. So now we need to figure out, we got to have more land to put the same amount of people that we had in the footprint of Bayou Towers. And we're having those conversations also. But I pushed on the Housing Authority to both give us a plan. We want to know how many people, we want to know, we've already done a letter for condemnation, we're waiting for them to tell us when they're going to tear down Bayou Towers. And if they don't do it in the time that happens according to what the parish rules are, we're going to take whatever steps we need to, to make that happen. We have a housing crisis. It's time to fix that issue. And the parish government is going to do everything it can in the council, is going to do everything we can to fix the housing crisis issue that we have in this parish. And so you guys have my word, that I'm going to do anything and everything I can, and request every bit of data I need to, to get the answers to fix the housing crisis in Terrebonne Parish. And so if there's any more questions on that, if you guys want to talk about anything I talked about or anything else, I will, I had to answer any other questions.
You said that you'll be submitting applications through November. How does the community provide the council with a potential list of projects that would be important to them to submit an application?
So we've been doing this research at least since 2018. So there are a few plans that we put together, and one of those is a hazard mitigation plan, right? So how do we address some of the hazard issues when it comes to disaster recovery, or when it comes to issues like sewer and everything else that we deal with as a parish? And so a lot of times you have trouble funding something until you can present a plan. So we had some town halls, we went out to the public, we asked for feedback, we did some surveys. And so we've gathered all this information because we had to have stuff turned in. The first allocation plans had to be turned in in January 8th. When I took office, on the first council meetings, we were submitting that plan, right? So that was work done even before I took office. Second allocation plan got delivered in March. So we, again, we had to have those plans in place. We had to have a list of projects. And as we do the application, these projects are going to get more detailed, right? So my recommendation to you is if you have something you think we need to do, bring it forth to us, whether it's to quality of life, whether it's to a council member, whether it's to the administration right now, because, look, when the issues are reported, I say, give me an address, give me a picture. A lot of times, if you give me that, the issue will be resolved before I have a chance to even sit down with you. Because I'm trying to set up our team for success, right? I'm giving them the tools they need. And if they don't do their job, I'm going to hold them accountable, right? If something goes to Jim, and he doesn't handle it, that gets reported to me. And I'm going to have a conversation with his supervisor, who's the CAO, to understand what is holding you up, what is stopping you from doing what you need, and how we, how do we help you, right? We giving them the tools. We've changed the way we manage people. We, we give, we made everything measurable. This happens once a week, once a month, once a quarter, as needed, if this based on that. And through that process, we're having these one-on-ones. We're talking about what's going well, we're talking about what's not going well, and we're asking the employee or, and or the director how they're going to fix it, right? They're the ones that have been doing these jobs for 10 years, 15 years, and then sometimes maybe two, but they're, they have the experience of 20 years, right? So we want to hear from the employees and from the directors, what do they think needs to get done? And I tell them, they bring me a solution to the problem, nine times out of 10, we're going to go with it. There's going to be that 10th time where we do a different direction, but I'm going to tell you why. And they're going to be involved in the conversation. But I tell you, if you got an issue, and again, when we talk about nonprofits, you know, there's a few different ways that that can go. And we're constantly looking at where, we had a lady that worked with us that did some work with, you know, opioids and mental health and everything. She's moved on to a better opportunity. So we're looking at, you know, is this better, best over here, or do we need to look at putting that quality of life? put that quality of life? I've talked a lot about wanting to do the community outreach, but I'm, I'm struggling to get the funding for that. But I'm also looking at some other opportunities to do something temporarily because I believe community outreach is the answer. But how can we do that now with some of the resources and people that we have? So you want to give it to me? You want to give it to Jim? You want to give it to your council member? Please, any one of those directions. We want to know the issues that are going on, the things that need to be resolved. And, and, you know, as, as traveling to parish and be involved in the community like I have been, I've been working on trying to give people a hand up for, for a long time now. And so I, I think I have a decent understanding of what issues we deal with in each community. And we're going to be doing some town halls, going through each community, starting here within a month or two, to get a better understanding. But there should be no issue that's, nothing that stops you from coming to one of these people in this room to say, this is the need, and I'm going to ask you, do you have an idea how we can fix it? Right? And then how can we work together? What can we do to bring other groups together? You know, there's been a big, big conversation around opioids, mental health, behavioral health. Baye Community Foundation just had a summit, and they had about 200 people in the room. And those, there were people in that room that didn't know some of these other people existed. When I look at trying to resolve this, those issues, mental health, opioids, you know, all those things, I feel like we're better solving that as a region. So now we have a regional group like Baye Community Foundation heading that off. And we're trying to figure out what are the different groups in our parish, for example? What are their strengths? What are their weaknesses? What are the gaps? You know, and, and looking at having something that will identify gaps using a decision tree that then becomes an assessment for people to do self-service. Store corporations are about to release an app that is going to show resources by parish, by region, whatever it is. And so we have a few different things that are coming out. But we're working through Baye Community Foundation because number one, they have some funding. And two, they could bring in, if there's not a resource to Terrible Parish, they might know where it is in La Fouch, or they might know when it's in St. Mary. And again, how can we work together to resolve these issues? Because I'm a firm believer in many hands make light work. And that's what we try to do every day.
Interesting letter, um, on my email from Louisiana Housing by Governor Landry. And everybody's talking about housing and placing people and how the people who need somewhere to live and everything, you know? And so I was wondering, did you hear anything about, we are as landlords, you know, we're willing to build these places for people to have somewhere to live. But I don't see any, you know, the government making any effort. Did you hear anything? You might talk to you about that before because the meeting I went to after Hurricane Ida, um, about landlords and all that, but it didn't work for us because we want chosen Terrible Parish to be able to build housing for people. So I was wondering, since the letter came across, I do get the newsletter from Louisiana Housing, the letter that Governor Landry wrote, but I haven't heard anything else. I meant to write him a letter to see what I can feedback I did from him, but I never did. But did you ever hear anything?
No, I do remember talking to you about that letter. And it was my understanding that he was going to take a look at all the programs that LHC had, since he is and you as the governor. Like I said before, after Hurricane Ida, the state retained all the CBGDR money for housing. So it was the state that actually came to Dumas, and they were presenting programs that they had to try to help landlords rebuild their housing. And again, I think part of that problem is that LHC was not allowing new construction in a flood hazard area. Yep. But yes, ma'am. But if I do hear anything more, I'll give you a call and let you know.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I think Ms. Beckneris asked a question, and I'll be lying to everybody in this room to say that it didn't come to me. And the thing is, is that I think when the question was asked about the money that's going to be coming in in November, the general consensus with a lot of people in District Two is saying, what they're saying to translate is who's in the room making the decisions to what are the priorities of the money that's going to be coming in, when it does come in? I think we can create that conversation going a little farther down the line where we can have a better understanding because one and two is being put together. I think that's what was brought to me. I'm glad it was brought out from the audience to come this way, to find out who's in the room, whereas a representation from that district, someone such as a Mr. Tillman, other people in the area that may be associated with some of the decision making in reference to one of the priorities of the projects that's coming in and moving in handling with the money.
I want to add something to all that, too. So one of the things I did when I took office was sat down with our directors and sat down with our CFO and said, show me all the projects we need. Show me everything we need right now, right? And so something as simple as road striping. So we have a spreadsheet that shows all the road striping we need, what prices. And I said, have we ever taken that to either our state level, state level or federal level, or to a grant to say, if we could do all the road striping at one time, how much would that cost? And so I think it's somewhere around $3.2 million. We took that to our federal delegation, said, can we find some money in the infrastructure, in the infrastructure bill to do striping, right? So I look at that same thing with lift stations. So we, we take and do, say we do $100,000 for lift stations every year for that public courts department. Have we ever put together, if we could fix all our lift station, what does that look like? And so if it's a million dollars to fix it all, I want to go see if I could find that money while we're doing $100,000 a year to fix and upgrade the lift stations. And we're doing that across every department, every issue, roads, ditches, sewage, planning and zoning. We're, I mean, we're going through every department. What can we do to make things better? What can we do to serve the public? You know, let's be more customer service oriented. What can we do to, we're upgrading our website to make that easier to use. And hopefully you see more information coming out of parish government of this is what we have going on. And even as I look at the process of what I did for step two, for the allocation two for CBGDR, I made sure, I tried to give our council members more information. Here's a little, like before it was kind of a list. Now it's, here's a list and a summary of what we're looking to do. And we want to make sure that everybody is on the same page. Now, we had a small window. We asked for an extension to give us an extra month to get the data out, to have another meeting. And so we have a few, we had a little more of that in that second allocation. But I want to do everything I can from the time we have the opportunity to, again, see what projects we have already listed and make sure that everything you come to us with, if somebody brings me an issue, a lot of times I ask the question of, what's our protocol? How do we decide what's priority? How do we decide if we do east side of town versus west side of town versus north versus south, you know, how big the project is? And so by having those conversations on a protocol perspective, it doesn't matter who brings the issue, where they live, who their council member is. It's how do we handle this? And how do we get those kind of decision trees out to the public so that they understand, you know, the decision tree is yes, no, if not, if yes, this, if no, that, and have our residents be to, be able to have a cleaner, better understanding of how we function inside parish government and how some of the decisions get made. And again, trying to give as much information back as we can so that we all can make informed decisions. So again, I, I want to understand all our projects, no matter how big or how small they are, and working on making sure that that it's on a list and that our residents get to see that list. So I hope I answered that question by elaborating a little bit more.
Mr. Dean Swess, how you doing, man? Dean, he did a great job setting everything up. Ms. Diane Collins, where are you? Please stand. I'll tell you what, one, one of my greatest supporters, and I admire the fact that the work that she does with the kids, y'all, y'all can't imagine what Ms. Diane does. She's beyond recognizing. She's becoming an icon with the kids. So as we close, I want to thank all the panel members that, that attended here. Hopefully those of you that, you know, like when you go to church and say, well, what happened at church? You should have been there. You understand what I'm saying? Because, you know, I mean, I'm going to do my job regardless. I'm, I'm going to do my job regardless. But then I want you guys to know that when me and Jason talk, me and Jason talk. It's, it's obvious we have different backgrounds, but he's going to be a man, I'm going to be a man. He's going to be real to me, and I'm going to be real to him. But in all of for this to work, y'all got to be real to yourselves, be real to me, and we all going to be real. And the, the thing that I get the most about District Two is the fact you don't vote. You don't vote. Hold my feet to the fire. But everyone up here, they are part of the process. So as I close, may God forever bless you, and yours is my prayer. Thank you.
The recent oil spill on Baye La Fouch has many wondering, how will this affect my health? What will this do to my property value? What if I make a living from these waters? At Waits and Downer, our years of experience puts us in a unique position to help you navigate through this impact. If you or a loved one has been affected by this spill, let our law firm help you out. Waits and Downer, helping you navigate through catastrophic impacts. Call us today at 985-876-0870.